... zero to two people.
... behalf of Mutmets. And one of the things that I propose that we do a better job doing is proactively giving feedback to the council and city administration on your priorities. The other day, we sat here at a coffee and we talked about the importance of those speed limit electronic signs. They cost $5,000 each. We have one for the whole city. Let's get five. How about getting an extra police officer on the street here for Ward Four? So we have more than one. In that way, we can do better enforcement. The police would love those things, and we have to start advocating for that proactively before the departments come up with a budget, because then it's too late. And we know on the city council that the only thing we can do is we can just take away, we can't add. So now's the time that constituents need to be doing that. And finally, better participation in the community when we're in the planning process of major projects. The Harbor Plan, programs like the Open Space Plan that Janice Stelludo came out with, Housing Production Plan, we've done a good job, the MVP program, we've done a good job. But we can do better. We need a better job doing capital planning. We need a master plan. We need to hold ourselves accountable as elected officials. So I'm looking forward to working with members of this group right now. It's a pleasure to serve you in Ward Four. This is going to be my fourth term as your Ward Councillor, and I ask you for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Val.
Thank you.
And good evening, everyone. My name's Charles Clements, and I'll be the moderator for tonight's debate. I'm a Lanesville local as of two years ago. I'm a professional musician and a music teacher in the area. And so, we're here in Lanesville at the Community Center, which has sponsored this debate, and we're live streaming here with the assistance of 1623 Studios. Big thanks to them both. So here tonight, we have all seven candidates running for the At-Large City Council. Welcome, everyone. I'll be asking questions that were sent to the candidates a week ago, and they've agreed to address these questions tonight following some basic ground rules. These are: respect for their fellow candidates and the audience watching online; keeping focus on their own positions and not the attack of others' positions; and to keep their answers within the time limits allotted for each question. There will be three minutes given to the first question, which should include each candidate's personal introduction or opening statement, and background as to their work in the community. And then the following four questions will be allotted two minutes each. I'll read each question before the answers, and then rotate who gets to start first. Make sense? Great. All right, so the total timeframe is 90 minutes, and with that, let's get to the first of our five questions. Question number one. As an At-Large City Councillor, you would be serving residents across the entire city. Can you tell us what your understanding is of the worries and hopes of residents in their own lives, in their neighborhoods, and for the city as a whole? If they were here telling us about their concerns, what would those be? Are there any particular groups that you've been listening to, and what are they saying? The elderly, the youth, working class, artists, business owners, professionals, and others? And why don't we start right here with you, Jeff?
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Lanesville Community Center, specifically Valerie Nelson, former Ward Councillor Valerie Nelson, for inviting us and arranging this. 1623 for broadcasting this. Farrell and Charles, thank you for your participation. And thank you to all the candidates. I think that there's something to be said for the cooperative spirit that I've been sensing from all of the candidates to make Gloucester better, and I don't think there's anybody on this panel that doesn't want to do that. We may have different priorities, but it's been a very respectful campaign so far, and I hope it continues to stay that way. So thank you, everybody. An At-Large City Councillor is voted to the city council by the entire city and has to represent the entire city, but specifically needs to work closely with each of the Ward Councillors. I've been At-Large City Councillor and Award Councillor. It is hard when you're a Ward Councillor to go before eight other people, and you're hoping to represent your neighborhood, you've done your homework, and maybe the other councillors haven't done their homework, and to have that sort of understanding and trust that you're doing the right thing on behalf of people you represent. So I think one of the roles of an At-Large Councillor is to balance the needs of the city, citywide, but also to support the Ward Councillors. We are very lucky to have Val Gilman as a Ward Councillor. I've known her for years. I've also known all of the Ward Four Councillors since, let's see, Bill Holmes, and then I think Valerie was there, and Joe Kachtner, and Astrid of Clintonburg, and Vito Calamo, and Jackie Hardy, God rest her soul. I've had a working relationship with all of those, and I think I can say I have a good relationship with everybody on this council, this panel, and whoever wins, if I'm lucky enough to be there, that they would know that they have support for me. The new city council needs to engage in everybody's interests. I think that the question was partly, who are we listening to? Listening is a proactive engagement. It's dialogue. Dialogue has, the word "di" means "to," has to be back and forth. And I don't think listening only happens three weeks before an election, or a month before the election, or election season. So everybody here has been trying their best, I'm sure, to listen. But it's something that has to happen year-round, all day, every day. I was very blessed to have the opportunity to work, I think, Val, you mentioned Janice Stelludo. Janice organized Plan 2000, turned into Plan 2001 because it took a little while, and I was designated as the note-taker. And it was a great experience for me because we had 53 consecutive meetings throughout the community on every issue. So I got to listen and obviously write down all the notes, but be part of the process in the planning. And that's something we need to do again. That's something that's required by the city every 10 years, and I don't think we did a 2020 plan. I don't know, I think the 2010 plan was just a renewal of the prior one. But that's one of the ways that we need to step up and work really hard on behalf of residents. I think the rest of the question was, what would people be saying? I think there are people who are genuinely, I don't want to say scared, but the cost of living in Gloucester has gone through the roof. And that's partly driven by housing costs, mostly driven by housing costs. But there are things that the city does, and we don't need to get into every single detail that makes it harder to live and work and do business in Gloucester. And I think we should be very careful on how we are treating our residents respectfully and not nickel and diamond. And I'd like to use this moment to express my empathy. I don't know that I can say specifically that I know the budget in and out, but the offer, the offer to the school employees and the teachers of 1% is probably not sufficient for them to feel like they're valued, especially considering how hard they've worked over the last few years. And I think this might be one of those panels to say that something needs to change. So anyway, that's, I don't think I did a good job introducing myself. Jeff Worthley, elections November 2nd. I look forward to working with whoever wins, and I'd like to earn one of your four votes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jamie O'Hara. I'm an existing At-Large Councillor, have been for three terms for six years. I've been, it's been my honor to be a servant of the people. As a city councillor, I take it very seriously that, again, being a servant of the people, everyone has an issue in the city. I've knocked on many doors. You walk away, a person will come running after you with their issue. We have to be cognizant that we work for the people. Every city employee is a servant of the people. I want to thank everyone here tonight, but more importantly, I want to thank everyone who's watching this at home, and I ask you, the people at home, to get involved with your city. This is not my city. This isn't any of ours. It's not the mayor's city. It's you at home. It's your city. You get involved, you will get what you want. If you sit home, you don't get involved, unfortunately, what you get is what happens. And I've seen it for six years. I've gotten people involved. Prior to being a city councillor, in Ward Four, we had a closed Bayview fire station. I, along with one of your residents, Russell Hobbs and Greg Smith, we fought and clawed to open those fire stations. And it was Bridget Clary who gave her life, unfortunately, when that fire station, all the fire stations were open thereafter. But with that said, I can't stress enough that this, again, is a beautiful city. It has been discovered. We see it in all parts of Gloucester. Everyone is scratching and clawing for their own piece of turf. The easy landscapes have been built upon. Now we're chasing the ledge. People are complaining about blasting. Blasting is common practice. We don't have that regulation. People, their homes are being damaged. We have to stand up as a council to address what the people want. Last night, I took a call from a constituent that was, to be honest with you, be straight up, that this constituent couldn't sleep at night because of what this constituent saw in our school that's being used to carry the veteran school being the old St. Anne's. I immediately emailed the mayor with the concerns. That's what my job is, is to be a voice of the people. That's what the job is of any city councillor. You're a voice of the people. And again, I can't stress enough that if I'm elected on November 2nd, if you make that decision to reelect me, I will continue to be your servant of the people. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carlton McKay, and I am running for Councillor-at-Large. Most of you know me as Carl, or if my childhood friends know me as Chip. So either way, just vote McKay on Election Day. I'm not a politician, and I'm learning very rapidly on everything that's out there. And part of my goal was to reach out to every part of the community. You've asked what residents would think, and here are some of what their issues are. Why did the teachers only get a 1% raise? What are we doing with affordable housing? We're just building and building and building, but where, who is it affordable for? Where is the middle class represented in affordable housing? The other thing was waterfront development. With the new restrictions on housing and having to be built so high, they lose the first floor of the house. Are we in the city going to adjust height requirements so they can actually have a full house, not just half a house, when they build with the new restrictions? What are we going to do about funding for the arts? Neighborhood meetings, that was a big thing. Most people in the city feel like they're not a part of the city anymore. They feel like their voices aren't being heard, being shut out at council meetings. That needs to change. I believe every voice should be heard. Our taxes on our water and sewer bill are among the highest in the country, and that is a major issue with a lot of people. They're being priced out. They're taking the chance to sell their house and move away, all our family and friends. And city planning. What are we planning in the city? It seems like we're just putting properties here and there just to generate revenue. Do we have a goal? Do we have a vision? Do we see where the city is going? I'd like to sit down with the planning board and discuss that. Where are we going as a city? The traffic around the new school. We already have concerns with the West Parish traffic situation. What's going to happen when we open this new super school over on Webster Street? I grew up in that neighborhood. Right now, a lot of, a lot of it, the congestion with traffic is the town of Rockport going through those lights on the Eastern Ave. We need to build a better relationship with the town of Rockport to alleviate a lot of our traffic concerns and the pressure it's put on our infrastructure heading into Rockport. Private road repair. This has been a big thing with a lot of private residents. When developers are building a new development, they seek that private road so they can get their stuff in there. But when it's a private road with public access, who's responsible to pay for that? I mean, are the residents going to now put up like little gates at the entrances to the public access roads like they do over on Eastern Point? Where do we find a solution for that? I need to work on that and find a good solution on that. And adding new liquor licenses, I know that that has to do with the liquor board, but that was a major concern with a lot of business owners. Rather than having to shut down for just seasonal licenses, can they continue to go on? And most importantly, I just want the citizens' voices to be heard, and that's why I joined in this race. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Robin Hubbard. I'm running for Councillor-at-Large. I've never held an elected seat in the city. I did run against Bruce Toby in 1999, and that was an incredible experience. I learned an awful lot about the political process and people. Carlton just did a good job listing what people are concerned about. I hear the same thing. So I'm going to talk about At-Large versus Ward Councillor. I get a question asked from me often, and I like it when people ask, well, what does At-Large mean? And this is the way I explain it. I feel like I'm sort of involved in civics here. I tell them that we have five Ward Councillors, and we all have, and four At-Large. So we have a Ward Councillor that represents a geographic area that we live in, and we also have four At-Large. So if I live in Ward Four and I have an issue and I call Val Gilman and get her on board with my issue, it's really a good idea for you, or me, or whoever has the issue, to lobby the other four At-Large Councillors. In that way, perhaps maybe between the one Ward Councillor and the four At-Large, a collaborative effort can be, or a coalition can be formed, and perhaps maybe an issue can be addressed, resolved, remedied, something can be fixed, and then there's support on the council, because the council ultimately will vote on all the issues that come before. So I have had that great opportunity to explain that to people. Gloucester is no longer, well, Gloucester is not really racially diverse. It's, but it's socially and economically diverse. We are no longer a working-class city with wealthy summer visitors who stay in Inns or hotels, but we're a city that attracts by virtue of our neat beauty, wealth, year round. New neighbors, and the new neighbors seem to be a lot more affluent than regular Gloucester, at least that's the feel. If we all really care about coexisting harmoniously with one another, we must put the idea of community first, what is good for the community, for our shared social space. I don't really have an agenda. I'm running as a people's candidate. Nobody from the establishment called me up and said, Robin, will you take out papers and run? I want people to tell me what their concerns are, and I will try to champion their causes. Two things I hear repeatedly that are resonating. The public feels left out. The public feels left out, and the other thing that I hear is, there's a lot of bad feeling, a big heartache about the taking of Meadows Field. That's what I hear a lot. Thank you very much.
My name is Jason Groh. I want to echo my thanks to everybody involved in putting this together. It's quite a thing to have this streaming live on TV and on the internet so people can see what's going on. For those of you who don't know, I spent four years in the city council as Award One Representative several years ago. I was on the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, and bring experience to the council at a time, I think, when we are in desperate need of experience. We're losing a lot of councillors, and I think that experience is going to be an essential part of establishing a functional council moving forward. The question at hand is the concerns of residents and what our concerns are as a community. I came to Gloucester with my wife Sarah 21 years ago, and we left San Francisco for a lot of the reasons that people now are feeling desperately concerned about leaving Gloucester, and that was that housing prices, cost of living, was forcing people out, forcing people in the middle class, people in the arts community, were being essentially shoved out of their home. We came to Gloucester and we thought, well, here, we've got a place now where we can establish roots, and we can raise our children here, and our children can raise their families here. And over the last 20 years, that dream has diminished a little bit, as we've seen how things have become so expensive to live here. I think a lot of parents my age and younger are worried about where their children are going to be when they begin to establish their own families. So I think the issue of housing affordability and workforce housing is an issue that is of concern to people. I think there's a lot of concern over whether or not, if we have a huge infusion of people coming into the community, that we lose the artists, we lose the multicultural aspect of Gloucester that we all find so important. But I think one of the questions that I think people keep asking is, are we doing enough? Are we doing enough to plan for sensible economic development that actually brings good-paying jobs to the community? Are we doing enough to plan for infrastructure improvements, not just in the near term, but over the next couple of decades? Are we doing enough to address workforce housing? I know the planning board is working aggressively on zoning changes that may help alleviate some of those issues, but we really need to think about whether or not we want to keep Gloucester as a community for families. And if we continue on the route that we're going, I think that's going to be in danger. So as a city council, we have the opportunity to influence zoning changes and budgetary issues. We need to constantly address the issue of education. We have terrific schools. I think that people underplay the value of our schools. We have tremendous programs and opportunities for our students, and I'd love to see the council bring more emphasis on the positive things that are happening in our community.
Hi. My name's Tony Gross, and I decided to run for city councillor because I know I can make a difference. As Jason alluded to, there's several councillors that are not running for reelection, and I felt as though we needed some leaders who have actually gotten stuff done, and I have. For example, as Chair of the Waterways Board, we, I spearheaded the move to reorganize that department, and today it is one of the best departments in the city. We emphasized public relationship, public relations, communication. We did, we've done all of that, and we now have a really stellar department there with, where Gloucester is now one of America's top 10 ports to visit. And I will speak to that later also because it's a great way to get visitors to Gloucester, to downtown, without any traffic issues. We've worked very hard to do that. It's taken, took a long view to do that. We're going to talk about communications further on in the question, so while I believe, or I will be totally transparent, open with communications, and be factual about how things go, but we'll address that later on. As far as the groups that I talked to, I had a tremendous experience. I took a booth at the sidewalk bazaar in both block parties, and that was what a cross-section of people, you know, they talked about, everybody who's mentioned here, the elderly, the youth, working class, artists, business owners, professionals, they all came and they all wanted to talk. And I had the best, there was such energy, really, it was so uplifting to hear all those people talk to me about what they felt and how they felt about it. A lot of their issues were, you know, the civility and cooperation that is so necessary in our city's government to be effective. They really felt that that needed to be brought back into the play and so that we can have discussions, not necessarily always agreeing, but at least have civil discussions where you can disagree and have discussions and listen to each other and further the ideas, and with the open-mindedness to change your mind. Sustainability was a big issue for people. You know, what are we going to do with the rising sea level? We're an island. We really need to deal with that, and we really need to deal with that with a very long-term plan that has benchmarks and a timeline. Housing, that's been, you know, discussed both young and old, our seniors and our young people are being priced out of the city, while, yes, their homes are going up in value, but then so are their assessments, and that makes their tax bills go up that much more. And so we need to, we need to figure out how to, how we can, as a body with zoning, working with the planning department and the administration, to come up with some creative ideas. I was going to go to the working waterfront, but being a retired fisherman, that's very dear to me. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight and putting this together. My name is Peter Cannavale. I'm running for Councillor-at-Large. Quick bio, I was born and raised here. I graduated from Gloucester High. Continued my education at Wentworth Institute of Technology. I'm a local three-bricklayer. I'm a foreman for PJ Spillane. I married my wife five years ago. We have two beautiful boys. I've been serving on the zoning board for the last two years, and it's been an honor. And I'm the Vice President of a nonprofit club called Boxer, Gloucester Boxing Club. And we serve the community needs with the youth in our community. Being born and raised in Gloucester and living in different wards and precincts, each area shares similar concerns as well as different ones. Knocking on doors helped me dive deeper into the issues. Areas like downtown Ward Two and Three face parking and traffic issues. Cars flying through tight and high-density neighborhoods has always been a big issue. Safety is a concern and more available parking. Areas in Ward Four share concerns about changing their neighborhoods. Mansions were taken over and the village was slowly changing its identity. The people of Ward Four would like to preserve their identity, as they should. They also expressed their concerns about a balance in retaining more affordable housing. In Ward One and Five share concerns about overdevelopment. Open space was a big draw as well. New schools to come on the horizon, and how are we going to pay for them? And so we need to work together with our neighborhoods and our Ward Councillors and aid them in any way we can. We need to engage with our community, and as a parent of two, I think I speak for our parents, our concerns is about our children's safety. Not to say Gloucester isn't safe, but as a parent, we can't help it. Are our kids feeling safe at school from bullying? Are they creating wonderful memories? Do they make enough friends? Not only are they physically safe, but are they mentally as well? Are they getting the best education? And also, the cost of childcare has been a stressful burden for us parents. That's what keeps me and my wife up at night. As a whole, I feel our community shares a lot of the same outlooks: safety, schools, affordable housing, our seniors, climate change, and much more. And they all mend together like a fishing net. If there's a hole in the net, it can affect the whole catch. We truly are all in this together. As far as hopes, I feel that everyone I talk to wants to ensure that they are heard and have a voice. I know because I have expressed these similar concerns and made sure that our councillors were listening. And I know that the citizens of Gloucester want to be represented by someone who's authentic, compassionate, honest, and possesses some common sense. That's what Gloucester people want. So whether you're an artist, business owner, volunteer, white collar, blue collar, I think I speak for most people that we want a lot of the same things, a better future. Our hopes can come to fruition if I'm elected. Thank you.
All right. Question number two. And this time, we'll start with James. All right. And yeah, this question's just going to be two minutes, so a little quicker. Gloucester 400 will be celebrated in 2023. Organizers are hoping that we can learn from the past as we transition into the future. If you looked ahead to 2030, what kind of place would Gloucester have become? Much the same as today, or if different, in what ways? What are your hopes and fears, and as a city councillor, are there some important ways that you could help us lead us in what you consider the right directions?
Thank you. This is a serious question, but we live with real issues that exist today. We can look to the 400th, but I, as a city councillor, and any of us if elected, have to look and answer to the citizens that have the problem. have to look and answer to the citizens that have the problems that they deal with today. So I I don't mean to not answer that question, but I I feel it's very important to look at the the issues that the people have presently. Looking to the future, we have committees, we have 400th Committee that will will address those concerns. We can't lose sight of the most valuable asset that we have in the city being the harbor and the value that that brings to the city. Right now, we have a wonderful visitors' center. The fishing community is dwindling because of regulations, but we can't give up on that. It's a large ocean. The fish will return, and we need to be prepared for that. But answering to the people, I can't stress enough, listening to the people, bringing their concerns, the high water and sewer rates, having a school system that is top-notch for our students so that when they go into the real world, that they can take on the real world, because they won't know until they enter the world whether they've missed out. So it's our responsibility as leaders of the city to stand up for the children, in this case, the schools, the elderly, making sure that they're safe, that we have emergency services to answer the call should that be needed. So I look at more present time versus distant, being a city councillor, and I thank you very much.
So in the past, I believe that our past administration has sold out our city and has sold out our hopes for our kids' future. I don't want to go back and repeat that. The Fuller School would have been an amazing site for our new fire station, police station, and our combined school system. Instead, we've chosen to let the police department and the fire department buildings fall into disrepair. We've chose to combine two schools into a neighborhood where they don't go. It it the traffic nightmare is just going to be a mess, but there's nothing I can do to go backwards. We can only move forward and learn from our mistakes and not make these again. We need to sit down and have a plan for the city. Where are we going with this city? Are we going to build this large building here? Are we going to build that large building there? Do we have a flow of what the city wants to be like? I look forward to working with everybody in this community to have a plan for Gloucester's future. I have my vision. I want to hear your vision. Thank you.
I live in paradise. We all live in paradise, and we want to keep paradise for ourselves. I am fearful. Gloucester is attracting a lot of wealthy people, but Gloucester is not a wealthy city. It's a beautiful place, but not a wealthy city. We are not Cambridge. We can't afford to build workforce housing for people. The city spends most of its revenues on salaries, pensions, and benefit packages for employees, as it should. There's not enough to maintain the roads and buildings and infrastructures on an annual basis. Maybe that's why Gloucester's always looking for grant money. I'm not sure. If I ran my household like the city runs itself, I would have to move out of here. I'm not a taxing authority, though, and I can't print money like the federal government. So in order to maintain our paradise, I I would strongly suggest that Gloucester needs to live within its means, and only then will it become affordable for, again, for ordinary people.
I think the question is, what kind of Gloucester do we want in 2030? If we do absolutely nothing at all, what we're going to see is we're going to see a great increase in wealth and a harsher divide economically. As 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 of right now, Massachusetts did a study that in 2030, forty-six percent of Gloucester residents will be over sixty years old. They are, right now, we have about ten percent of our community lives in poverty. So we have a tremendous gap in where we are in terms of our wealth and our poverty. If we do nothing at all, if we don't encourage workforce housing, if we don't encourage economic development, if we don't encourage people to stay in Gloucester, that gulf is going to be even wider. It is within the council's purview to help with these plans, and it's it's really important, I think, to say that it's not enough to plan. We have to actually implement plans as we come along. There's no point in doing a lot of plans that don't end up actually having any guts behind them to to get them into operation. You know, we're facing, I I say Gloucester's at a bit of a tipping point right now economically, in terms of our population, in terms of our infrastructure, and in terms of where we are going to be in the next decade, in two decades. And if we don't address those issues, the issues of of infrastructure and global climate change, we're going to, we're going to find ourselves constantly trying to backpedal and figure out how to how to fix problems that we should have planned for well in advance.
Yeah, you know, 2030 is like almost only eight years away, so it's not like it's in the distant future here. And if we don't start planning for it today, we're, it's going to be here and we're not going to be ready. I feel that it's important to maintain Gloucester's fearless spirit and inventiveness. We, you know, Gloucester's always been unique and and has carried itself very differently from many other places because of its its type of, you know, living off the sea. It has a certain character to it that is like nowhere else. The Gloucester Genomics, Marine Genomics Institute just did a survey, which in 2030 would be nice to see both land-based, not necessarily on the waterfront, but land-based. In their survey, a large majority of Massachusetts life sciences companies find Gloucester would be a very desirable place to be located to. Now, we also have the the Gloucester Biotechnological Institute, which is sort of a farm system of high school graduates, to be able to afford to live here because they would have jobs that could could fill the need. Now, Gloucester's not unique in its housing costs. It's pretty much that way on the entire North Shore, so we're not unique. The fishing industry, we need to make sure that we maintain the, what's needed is affordable wharfage and the infrastructure so that we can continue with a strong, vibrant fishing industry that hopefully has recovered in the next eight years, a little bit further along than we are today, but we have to make sure that we preserve what we need to do that. Downtown, you know, again, I mentioned them trying to get people downtown via the water. The more people we can get into downtown without traffic, the more it's going to be a healthy place to go, and the businesses will will be vibrant, downtown will become vibrant again. The arts community, the arts community is still pretty song, strong, and and I think, but as a councillor, we need to recognize smart plans and work with the administration to to make sure these plans have benchmarks and timelines. Thank you.
Great. Peter?
In 2023, Gloucester 400 will be an exciting day to celebrate the rich history of Gloucester. Looking into my crystal ball, I believe Gloucester will have incremental change, maybe some new buildings, some new faces, and some new neighborhoods and businesses. But I believe our culture will remain the same because our roots run deep into the bedrock. Gloucester's heritage has been here for four hundred years, and we're not going anywhere. But I want to ensure any change is positive change, change that will better the city and the people. My hopes are that whatever Gloucester faces to any change or adversities in the future is that we do it together. I hope we have as much participants as we possibly can, more community engagement. This way, the city moves forward together and doesn't leave anyone behind. That would be the right direction. As for fear, fear is generated through the unknowing, and we fear what we do not know. However, we can harness that fear and turn it into something positive. We have infrastructure projects, schools, water treatment plant coming before us, so we fear the cost. But we can plan and forecast these projects by preparing, and we can take away some of those uncertainties. How are we going to pay for it is is the question, and I know I'm repeating myself. However, we need to invest in more renewable energy. The cost savings will create more available funds to pay for such projects, plus we'll lower our carbon footprint. Improving our downtown economy by working with the license board and community development departments to pass more year liquor license for restaurants to generate more tax revenue. Hire more grant writers to procure more funds and use upper money to create grant programs for business opportunity. This will help jumpstart our local economy with more new businesses. Using the tax revenue from business growth will help alleviate the burdens from the taxpayers. We can eliminate any fears by being proactive, creative, and innovative. With a comprehensive plan, I believe we can continue to push our city in the right direction. Thank you.
Jeff?
Jeff, thank you. I love this question. And I'm with Tony in that eight years is right around the corner, so we need to prepare for that, but we should also be thinking about 2040 and 2050 and 2060. And I think because of Peter, I'm now the second youngest candidate running, so I hope to be around in those years, and I'm sure there's a number of us that will be. Unfortunately, if we do nothing, as Jason was saying, our most vulnerable citizens will feel the burden more than any, they'll be left behind. And so I think we need to make a proactive step to make sure they're included in all of our dialogue. And there are some things that should stay the same. I hope that we can continue to raise families in Gloucester and feel like it's a safe place to live. I think overall, that's the case right now. But in 2030, I hope that we have a thriving harbor economy, which we do now and continue to. We have innovative schools, that we have resolved the private road-public road debate, and that we are able to pave roads so that people can drive safely in Gloucester. I hope that we have respectful dialogue and civil engagement with our city councillors and our mayor's office. I hope we have a very green-friendly, sustainable development plan. Our stabilization fund, I'd love to see more money, and that's where our bond rating improves, where our cost of borrowing drops. I'd like to see more people school-choicing into Gloucester than choicing out. I think I'd like to see some parking garages downtown. Two or three places come to mind, we can talk about it specifically. I'd like to see our parks maintained and revitalized. I'd like to see that our citizens who are addicted to various drugs get the help that they need and can recover. I'd like to see more candidates running for public office. I'd like to see a school building plan that doesn't always feel like we're on a rollercoaster. No disrespect meant by that, but there are times that we have a study done, everything sounds good, and then there's another study done, and it's a different plan. We have a capital improvement advisory board with nobody serving on it right now. We need to fill those positions. Okay. Okay. I'd like to think that we're not renting school space any longer or city municipal space. I'd like to see a charter change, so we stagger terms in the at-large and ward races, maybe a four-year term for mayor or city manager again. Those are just a few ideas for what we can accomplish in the next nine years to get to 2030 and then to continue looking further beyond. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. All right. Question number three. And this time we'll start with Carlton. Twenty or thirty years ago, public participation in Gloucester government was pretty high. Crowds showed up at annual budget and other city council hearings. Volunteers actually led in the development of various plans. City councillors held frequent meetings throughout the city. Do you believe that it's important to rebuild public engagement in the process of government? And if so, how would you propose to bring back people to participate in the affairs of the city council and of the city more generally?
Well, this is one reason why I got into the city council race, is a lot of people are not having their voices heard, and and there's no respect and dignity for these people that just want to be involved. They feel like they've been shut out, disrespected, and I'm just going to read you quickly this that was handed to me in a restaurant from one of our citizens. Carl, the city needs to organize neighborhood meetings. I agree. Not just ward meetings. I agree. There are so many folks in the city that feel their voices aren't heard. This is why I entered the race. And aren't valued, the other reason why I entered this race. There are great ideas out there from our citizens. Wonderful people are here. They don't feel like they are being represented. This is why I'm in the race. Can we be included in the decisions? Certainly. That's what I want, is every voice to be here. Their main concern is, is there just a selective few that get to decide where this city is going? Under me being elected to the city council, I hope to change all those fears of these people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
I'm a little bit of a worry myself, Carl, and I will ensure that people's voices are heard. I would be honored to have that task. People are excluded. Is it by design? I'm not sure, but it, the city relies heavily, heavily, I suppose, on, it seems, on outside experts and consultants now to get things done. We need our own experts and consultants. We must raise them here, foster a sense of commitment, public service, community service among our native consultants and experts. And with that, integrate them into any process that involves our quality of life, our livelihoods, our pocketbooks, our children, our elderly. I'm running a precinct-level campaign in order to bring the public back to the table. We are and they are the true stakeholders.
Thank you. Jason?
The short answer is absolutely. We definitely need to rebuild public engagement. As a as a city councillor, one city councillor, I held multiple community meetings on a variety of issues, specifically to hear the voices of of people's concerns and their ideas about how to do things better. People get involved when they feel like they're being listened to, that their that their opinions are heard, that their ideas are heard, that they have a genuine stake and investment in the outcome of whatever's being decided. So I absolutely support far greater public engagement. I am an absolute advocate of transparency. It was on, when I was on the council, that we began to publish all of our meeting notes and and agendas and everything online to make sure that people had access to them. Without without transparency, without accountability, without listening to the community, we have no charge. At that point, we're we're not, we're not capable of doing our jobs properly. It's without, it's with public engagement that we have the tools necessary to guide the decisions that are going to affect everybody in the community. So I'm a, I'm a big fan. Beyond that, I think that, you know, I'm very excited by the idea of of a hybrid model for meetings. The fact is, is that more and more people were able to engage in meetings by being remote and operating on the Zoom calls. I know that there were were scores more people would be able to attend meetings and be involved, and I think that's a positive thing, not just for for working families, parents who who come home and and don't have time to to get their dinner ready and get the kids to bed and and go to a meeting, seniors at home who can't make it out to meetings at night. There's a lot of benefits for having remote participation that will engage the community and bring more people to the table.
Thanks. Tony?
I fully agree with everything that was said. You know, we need to restore trust by being open, transparent, and disseminating the facts out to the public, and also making sure that misconceptions that are out there are also addressed with with fairness and a sense of responsibility towards, with the people who who are involved with it. You need to, we need to bring back civics in schools. Let's, let's, you know, start generating the new, the new generation so that they know what it is to get involved and how democracy works. Let's start running, reestablish the running of all the agendas for every board, commission, and committee. The agendas on the Gloucester Daily Times. You used to be able to go on the Gloucester Daily Times and see what was going on in every board, commission, and committee in the city, including the city council and school committee. That's been scarcer and scarcer. That really helped people see what hot-button issues were on the agenda, and they could, if they couldn't be even before Zoom, they could watch it live on 1623 and get to know what's going on and be aware of when there would be a a public hearing on these things. And that's really important to- And that's really important to make sure that we get these facts out to the public so that they understand what's truly going on. And I think that's really the crux of it. We used to, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, I sat in budget hearings that you would fill the old Fuller Auditorium for a school budget hearing. It was phenomenal. We would sit there for two hours with people, a continuous stream of people coming up to tell us what they felt passionately about, and it was great. It really gave you a sense of what the community felt was important. And that's truly what we need, and if I'm elected, I will make certain that we make that accessibility available to all the citizenry. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Tony. Peter?
So I'm just going to echo off the rest of the panelists. I think we all agree that community engagement is a must. And I have to say, prior to this pandemic, I would attend some of the council meetings in person, and the ones I did attend were fairly full, which was great. However, I never really saw new faces. I'm sure there were some, but mostly the same faces, which makes sense when the question says that twenty, thirty years ago, there were larger crowds. And maybe there was, but it could be the very same groups from decades ago that are the same ones today. And that's great, but the question is, what can we do to grow community engagement? And is it important? And yes, it is very important. It's extremely important to grow our audience and participants. Community engagement should be a priority, and I say that because we want people as a whole to move forward together on these decisions. And we can grow our engagement by using more technology. Marketing is one way to spread the word and get the younger generation more involved. We can hold seminars at the high school and educating the youth on the importance of being involved. There are many platforms of communication and to get people engaged. Text message alerts, email, social media platforms, virtual meetings. These tools are being used today, but at a very low performance and sometimes inaccurately. With the right framework, we can deliver better services to the community, all this with accountability, transparency, and honesty. More outreach for volunteering is a must. Teach our kids at a young age to give back to the community. Pay it forward. These practices can help cultivate young students to get involved. That's how I learned. I was taught from my, at a young age, from my peers, and I pay it forward. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And I've been asked to repeat the question, just so everyone has it fresh in their minds here. Again, twenty or thirty years ago, public participation in Gloucester government was pretty high. Crowds showed up at annual budget and other city council hearings. Volunteers actually led in the development of various plans. City councilors held frequent meetings throughout the city. Do you believe it is important to rebuild public engagement in the processes of government? And if so, how would you propose to bring back people to participate in the affairs of the city council and of the city more generally?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So I don't think anybody here is going to disagree that public engagement needs to be enhanced to a level like it was in the past, but I also like to challenge a part of the question respectfully. Twenty years ago, I was on the city council, and we'd look out in the audience, and there'd be nobody there. Thirty years ago, my grandfather was chief of police, and he'd tell me unless it's about a dog issue, as Valerie Gilman, Val Gilman, sorry, just told us, it's not mugs, it's not dogs, people aren't coming out. I think this goes back even further. 1975, we changed our form of government from a planey form of government to a strong mayor. It's changed the role of the city councillor in some ways. For example, school committee members were elected every three years. At the time, the top vote getter was the mayor, figurehead mayor, and there was a city manager. And I wonder if there's something that we need to look at in our charter that changes our former government, that makes it more engaging for people to come to meetings. The flip side of the coin is also a very important one. I think we need to elect people that are good listeners and who represent a broad base, until we make these kind of changes, we get that input, people who represent a broad base of people in the city. When I first ran for city council, I was 22 years old, but I was personally friends with Peter Trigian, he was the mayor of Peabody, for 26 years. And like Jason was saying, when you're at city hall and there's 15 or 20 people that are either for or against an issue, you still also, as a city councillor, represent the single mother and the single father who can't come up to a meeting, someone who's disabled, the elderly, someone who's working two or three jobs and can't come to a city council meeting, someone who has anxiety speaking in public, people are shy. And I think there has to be a differentiation where we are also delegates for all those people and have to accurately represent their interests. How we get that information is probably an individual choice as a councillor, but I'm accessible. I think everyone here is going to try to be accessible. My phone number is on all my material, my email. I think there's a way that we need, as individual councilors and candidates, to also reach out to people more effectively, because I don't know that we just are going to get crowds to come back, especially, we're not done with our pandemic yet, especially knowing that we're not going to have people come to meetings yet. We need to represent everyone equally.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Jamie?
Thank you. This is a very important question, as I opened by explaining this is the people's city. The people need to get involved. I, as a six-year city councillor, explained to each and every constituent that has called me, that I've met on the streets, that you need to get involved, you need to speak to your neighbors. Power is in numbers. I think if we were to look back in some of the history of the meetings and see the people who did show up, whether it's Zoom, most recent probably Haskell Reservoir, people took offense to the shooting range. I was one of the supporters of revisiting it, and the people got involved, the people fought the fight, and the people got what they wanted. And that's, I think, a good indicator of what needs to happen. I can't stress it enough, people need to try to get over their fear. The Zoom has helped tremendously with the comfort that people can pick up the phone at the comfort of their home and call in. Prior to that, they would have to get over the fear of showing up at city hall and walking up to the microphone. So hopefully, we will return to live city council meetings so people will have the option of both. But as a city councillor now, I have explained to people that, again, I can't stress enough, that this is your city. We get excited during the election year. After November 2nd, so many of us just climbed back into the holes and for another two years, everyone's silent. People need to just remember that this is their city, that everyone, including every city councillor, every city servant, and the mayor, answers to the people of the city of Gloucester. So I can say that enough. Thank you very much.
Great. And thank you all. Let's move on to our next question. Question number four. Can you pick one or two of the following major challenges to our community and our neighborhoods as an indication of your highest priorities? And articulate the specific ways that you could see the city council taking a leadership role in addressing? Affordable and workforce housing? Climate change and coastal flooding? Economic development? Fishing industry and ocean science on the waterfront? Social services and human rights? City infrastructure such as roads, water, and wastewater? Or another issue that's not mentioned here? And we'll start with Robin.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to choose city infrastructure, roads, water, and wastewater. I alluded previously that it seems we don't have enough money to maintain our buildings, our roads and water and waste, certainly not the wastewater treatment plant the way we need to. We need to generate more revenue, and I do not suggest we do it by raising taxes. Private roads versus public roads, my God. Most of the roads in this city aren't even maintained by the city. So we still can't afford to maintain the roads despite that fact. If, we have a lot of bodies of water on Cape Ann, but we don't have the pipes, the infrastructure, into them. So it might be something to think about. I'm not worried about Gloucester running out of water particularly, but we will need to find money to build infrastructure to tap into these other bodies. The last thing I want to just quickly mention, and there's not enough time to get into it, is the working waterfront. That whole Inner Harbor is our largest industrial park in the city. And there's talk about zoning it differently, rezoning it, allowing alternate uses. That's great. Talk is good. Discussion is great. But it's an industrial park. It's a marine industrial park, and it has provided Gloucester with a fabulously rich heritage and fabulous food and protected all the men and women in families who are stakeholders in that Inner Harbor and allowed them to continue their businesses and not get pushed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
I really struggled with this question because I see the issues that are listed here as the issues that I think are the most important for the city moving forward, and it's sort of like picking your favorite child of five or six. Each one of these issues is inextricably linked to the other, and if we can't, we can't look at any one of them individually without recognizing that, without affecting one of them, we're not going to be able to, without changing something over here, we're not going to be able to change something over here. And what I mean by that is that we, you know, one of our big issues that we need to always address is economic development, bringing jobs into Gloucester, bringing in commercial and industrial real estate and development. If you don't have workforce housing for people to have, for the workers, you can't attract employers wanting to bring their businesses to the community. If you don't have modern infrastructure, you can't attract this kind of investment. Okay? There's expectations that we will have roads that are passable, that will have water and Wi-Fi, I mean, internet service, excuse me. My point is, is that without addressing each one of these issues at, in a comprehensive way, we're not going to move anywhere. I really strongly believe that the city council has got a number of issues that we can look at together comprehensively that will move the city of Gloucester forward in a way that keeps our inclusionary nature and keeps our multicultural and our diverse socio-economic community as a whole. Thank you.
Great. Wow.
Being a retired fisherman, I chose as my first subject the fishing industry, of course, on the waterfront. And how, you know, even though things have changed, it's still a very vibrant piece of our economy, and many families derive their livelihood out of it. And it still is somewhat of an incubator for younger people to get into it. And we need to make sure that we do not succumb to changing so much that we no longer have affordable dockage. We also need to maintain the marine industrial aspect of the whole thing so we have, you know, the railways, the shipyards, the supply houses. We need the processing and unloading facilities that are all necessary. Whether or not the fish comes back, because when we were kids and, you know, in the summertime, any given week, there was a couple of million pounds of fish landed in Gloucester, that I don't foresee, but I don't know if that's what we want to go to either. But we do, there is still plenty, the fish is coming back in the ocean, and we're not getting our fair share processed in the city of Gloucester. What does come in is going right out again. And I think we need to make certain that that aspect is maintained and protected, and the city council absolutely can do that through zoning and approving any changes that are brought forward into the designated port area. Climate change is another thing that we're, that we need to deal with, and we need to deal with that with a long view again. We have to make sure that we have some smart plans that deal with, again, benchmarks and timelines. If we don't have those two things, you will never have a plan succeed. You have to have goals, and I believe that that would be very, very ready, we would be ready then for what comes down the line, where we've always been playing catch-up and reactionary, and now we really do need to take the time to sit back, look at this thing, and then move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All these topics are very important, and Jason hit it on the head. You can't look at one without recognizing the other, and they should be taken seriously with accountability. But if I could pick two, I would focus some of my energy on social services and human rights and city infrastructure. For social services and human rights, it isn't a sexy topic, but it affects more people than we know. From depression to drug use to domestic abuse, we need to recognize that these issues are real and are here. I've always felt I had a calling to help people. I would like to see Gloucester have more equitable access to healthcare services, and at the top of my head, look into mental health. Mental health awareness was this past October 10th. If we have learned anything this past year and a half, is that mental health needs are real. We need more access and resources because it's hard to come by, and if we can incentivize more mental health clinicians, we can help provide a service to our community that will be beneficial. Mental health doesn't discriminate, so whether you're an adult or a child, it can be destructive. Some begin to self-medicate, and if we can take preventative measures, we can lower the rate of addiction. We can take the steps like providing more programs that target health and well-being, and after-school programs that are nonprofits are a great resource to fill the community needs. As a vice president of a local nonprofit, we help target those needs. Our mission is to promote health, well-being, humility, and self-worth. And if the city can partner with these nonprofits, we can save countless lives. The great thing is Gloucester has a community development block grant that can help fund these programs. I'd like to see that increase in that fund. We can also go after state, federal grants as well and use some of the Opera money to pump back into the programs that took deep hits through the pandemic and revitalize some of these programs. As far as city infrastructure, it comes down to dollars, but also scheduling and vetting. Prioritizing is equally important. Paying for infrastructure projects is a concern. As taxpayers, we all have it on our minds, so we need to get creative and innovative to ensure that we can provide these funds so it alleviates the tax burden on the citizens. With my background in construction, construction management, we'll be, I'll be working with the council vetting these projects and ensuring we don't waste taxpayer dollars, and we do it right the first time. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Jeff?
Thank you. I'm going to pick affordable housing and economic development, because I think all of them are tied together, but those two are tied most closely together. There's an initiative right now, Sustainable Future, led by Valerie Nelson, Dick Proudy, Dave Sargent, to name a few people, and there's a regional collaboration with the local officials in Althor, Cape Ann, and the state, Bouchard, and A. Margaret Ferrante. And the organizations Town Green 2025, the Gloucester Meeting House Foundation, and the Cape Ann Climate Coalition are partnering with the Harvard Graduate School of Design to look at the kinds of things like clustered multi-unit housing, revitalizing existing stock, and net-zero building strategies. And this innovative approach is probably what's been missing for years in terms of how do we provide additional affordable housing? Because the current zoning ordinance will not allow for the kinds of affordable housing we need in Gloucester to maintain that people living in Gloucester can stay in Gloucester. So I fully support the goal, and I'm looking forward to learning more about the organization. Economic development ties in directly because, you know, interestingly, when we collect a dollar from a residential taxpayer, we spend about a dollar fifteen in services, schools, trash, paving roads, et cetera, et cetera. When we collect a dollar from a commercial business, a commercial taxpayer, you pay what, eighty-seven cents? So when you look at the ratio of where we're going to increase the city's ability to provide services, it's going to be from commercial development. And right now, I think the commercial sector represents about eight percent of the entire city. When I was in the council, it was closer to 15%. Part of that's housing values are going up, but there's not the kind of investment in the business side that warrants, produces, I'm sorry, a net revenue for the city. So literally, a house being built costs a city money. A business being built, in theory, doesn't cost money because they're not adding kids to the school, they provide their own trash, they do their own plowing and paving. So there's some economics there that needs us to say, like, how do we incent more businesses to come here, high-quality jobs? And those jobs can help people afford the houses we have in Gloucester. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you. There are so many issues that we've talked about. The base, as a city councillor, the basics of keeping the streets clean, paved, sidewalks that are passable when the winter comes, which we're all facing, that the snows removed. We face a lot of ice, that we have the proper materials to fight ice on the roads. I've been an advocate that the city needs to take ownership of the sidewalks as far as removing the snow. The day of hiring a child are over to remove the snow. It goes to the trash, being, having a system that's in place that carbon footprint is reduced, picking up both the actual trash, the recycling, and potentially... reduced, picking up both the actual trash, the recycling, and potentially looking at the actual garbage, if you will, separating that, trying to be as environmentally friendly. Our buildings that we are constructing, that we are following the code to the letter of the code, that we're not skipping things, we're not forgetting things. We're looking at West Parish School. We have a traffic nightmare that we, as a city councilor, are left with. I see that as happening at the veterans' school. I opposed it, and I'm being straight up. It was addressed that we will address the traffic when it comes. I don't think that's being proactive. I think we need, we need to address things as they come. We have this all over the city, whether it's in the beaches, we have cash being handled. We need to change that to having credit cards, debit cards, a cashless society we turn to. We need to be advanced in that. Again, our schools need to be first-class for the benefit of the students and the parents. Our fire services, our police department need to be first-class, so when the people pick up the phone and dial 911, they get a professional that shows up to answer their call, whether it's at one o'clock in the afternoon or one o'clock in the morning. But we, as a city, we as a city servant, need to listen to the taxpayers of the city of Gloucester. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Cobble?
So like I've said before, we, I'm going to touch on city infrastructure and economic development. We need to have a better relationship with the town of Brockport. They are developing just as quickly as the city of Gloucester is, and unless we can help find a way to provide our roads, an easier way to get in and out of there, we're going to be in for a big situation. I'd also like to look into removing the city facilities manager out from under the rule of the DPW and back to its original place, so there is accountability and all our eggs are not under one roof to make sure our buildings in the city are being maintained a lot better. I'd also like to work with the merchants on Main Street. The big thing is their rent is ridiculously high. Now we have nine empty buildings along Main Street or so, I'm not quite sure on that number, but let's work with these landlords. Let's get these businesses in there. I mean, I've heard talk about pop-up shops, you know, for the holidays, and that's a Band-Aid fix. We need a long-term fix downtown. And the other thing is, we're going to, looking into building this, and I'm all for arts and culture, building this huge building on the one place on the waterfront that we actually have a view in the city, that tourists can come, of that beautiful paint factory. We're going to block that in and take away the parking. Where are we going to gain parking once this is done, when the city sells that off? I believe that we also need to have a website on the DPW that, with all the infrastructure work that's going on in the city, is maintained daily. Everybody is short on time in their lives, working two jobs, trying to take care of their parents, this and that, to be able to move around the city. It's been absolute gridlocked for almost two years on how to move around the city. Quick, easy fix, DPW, every morning, somebody posts where the construction is going to be, so everyday residents can move around the city and get their work done.
Thank you all. All right. Unless something else comes. Doing pretty well. So, great. Okay. Question number five, and we'll start with Jason this time. How has Gloucester performed in meeting the extraordinary challenges of COVID? If resilience is defined as the ability to deal with a crisis, how have we done as a community of city officials, residents, businesses, and social services organizations? Are there any lessons we can learn about how we can best move forward together in the future? Please explain your answers with personal stories where you can.
I don't think there's anybody who hasn't been scarred in some way by the pandemic. As a photographer, a self-employed photographer, I saw my business go from regular to zero in literally a day, and it's taken about a year and a half to even begin to start coming back. So I think there are a lot of people in my position who've had to endure economic privation and really challenging times economically. As far as the city's response, I'm not an expert. I don't know pandemic response, but my feeling and from what I've been told and from my experience, they've performed about as well as we could hope that they would be able to perform. We've never had to endure a pandemic like this, and we're still in the midst of it. What I would say is that the public health department took a leadership role. It engaged with our social network organizations, Action, the Open Door Pantry, and others, and really took an aggressive effort towards making sure that people were taken care of. As far as personal experiences and stories, I could tell you that my wife, Sarah Grow, is the director of advocacy and development at the Open Door. They worked very closely with the city, and at the time the pandemic struck, they saw an increase in their need rise by forty percent, and over the following months, that need kept at about twenty-seven percent higher than it ever had been. The Open Door missed zero days of service to the community, and when you're talking about an organization that feeds one in six in Gloucester, that is a phenomenal, phenomenal achievement. Other organizations all pitched in and worked to make sure that the most vulnerable in this community were taken care of and that people were housed, they had food, and they had some sense of safety in their lives. And hopefully, within, you know, the next year, we will finally rise out of this. I hope that people take the concerns that we're continuing to live in this pandemic seriously and work together to really meet the challenge and get beyond this.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Tony?
You know, I believe that we did do a, the city did do a good job with the COVID response. You know, we're fortunate to live in a city and state where our leaders took this severity of COVID to heart and implemented measures that made us all safe. We had a good COVID response. The health director took decisive action. We got two major vaccination centers here with the, you know, later on during the pandemic with the senior center and Elks. You know, Jason talked about the Open Door. Throughout the pandemic, I volunteered at the Open Door. I'm retired. I volunteered at the Open Door three to four shifts a week, either working, distributing the food to the people who came or delivering meals. The amount of those people, what they do is just miraculous. Enough cannot be said for what those organizations have done. And the organizations that fed them a lot of the stuff that they got, they needed gloves, they needed masks, they needed all kinds of things, they needed hand sanitizer, just to operate, they needed to have this stuff, and their COVID protocols were quite good. Without them, Gloucester would have really suffered a lot more than they did. It was really such a privilege to be able to be part of that and watch it. Also, on another personal note, with the Harbor Master, we wrote the protocols for boating safety during COVID-safe boating during the spring, when we had an early spring and it became, everybody was like, oh, I'm going to go on the water, I got a boat. Boat sales skyrocketed with COVID because people could go there. We worked with the Board of Health to get those guidelines, and those guidelines were then adopted by the state. So Gloucester has always been a leader, and I think that through this pandemic, we led also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Gloucester, the administration, did a tremendous job to ensure everyone's safety and well-being. The city was faced with challenges none of us have ever experienced, and it was constantly changing. Guidelines from the state and federal level were changing, and some of it didn't make any sense. However, Gloucester pulled it together, not just the administration, but the very people who live here. Groups and charities were formed and founded. We are all in this together helped save lives, in my opinion, and connected people. Those women, along with their volunteers, provide essential items to those people that were helpless. Some of those volunteers are here tonight with us. Carl, thank you for your efforts. The mayor's office and the city employees were working around the clock. What more could I ask for? Students were able to go back to school, which was not only crucial to their education but to their mental health. The city worked on passing special permits for restaurants to provide outdoor seating through the pandemic, which that alone created a new market for outside dining here in Gloucester. The city did the best it could with what it had, and being recognized by our governor is a reflection of our resiliency and dedication to the citizens of Gloucester. In personal experience, since the start of pandemic, we lost some loved ones, and it was heart-wrenching. Some funerals we were able to attend, some we weren't. My heart goes out to those families, and I truly believe if our local government and selfless people of the city didn't step up the way it did, we could have lost more family and friends. And the fireworks display was amazing dedication to those who's lost. And we can never forget what we went through and still currently going through. As far as what else could have been done is that I wish there were more resources and tools for business owners who need financial aid through these various grants. Gloucester procured a $500,000 grant to help out some of the small businesses. However, not all received those funds. Some did not even know how to apply for these programs, and some didn't even know it existed. Had we had an online seminar or workshop for all these small business owners, they could have navigated through the process efficiently and effectively, making the process less stressful. And again, more access to mental health programs would have been paramount to fill any gaps in the community needs. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a very important question. Firstly, I know people who have died, or knew people who died from COVID, and it's real, and any conversation about it not being real is not helpful to our public dialogue, in my opinion. I think our border health did an excellent job. I think our city overall did an excellent job. Right now, I think we're at a two-and-a-half percent infection rate of those tested, and I think the number's only eight active cases at the moment, so that's encouraging. Getting vaccinated is an individual choice. I respect that. The state average for our vaccine, for the vaccine, is seventy-six percent. The city of Gloucester's at eighty percent, so we have a better outreach on average than the state does. If you're looking to get vaccinated, the city's website has a list of places where you can go, including a mobile vaccination option, and there's no requirement for you to use your identification or your insurance, so if there's any concern about affordability, it's free. I think that's a place that anybody who's concerned about getting, how to get the vaccine can go to the city's website and find that. The city has done well in other areas. Our restaurants, our hotels, even our beaches have had the best year ever. Our state revenue is up higher than ever, partly because of capital gains taxes and the impact that has on the city's budget, is that we're in the plus side still. That gives us the resources to do a better job in the city. I'd like to echo the work that Carl has done, and Jason, your wife, Sarah's amazing work. She's an amazing advocate, and I think that she should be commended for that. I do think this brings attention to our emergency preparedness. We were very blessed with the border health that took action, but I think we should raise the question of, are we ready for another kind of pandemic? And it could be environmental, it could be vaccine, I mean, it could be virus-related. I don't know that we were as prepared as we could be, and we were, I'd say we got very lucky that we had some good leadership in those positions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. This was, this continues to be a very serious issue, but Gloucester, I think, has done a wonderful job. Our mayor, I think, tried to bring as much a sense of normalcy to the public, to the people, as she could, with conjunction with the Board of Health, the director. Our beaches, if you look back, not so much the summer of 2021, but the summer of 2020, which was the first summer, our beaches were open. We had visitors coming from all over to our beaches. Our friends to just the south, Manchester, their beaches were locked. As a matter of fact, I think Councilor Gilman can attest that I took a stand at one of the Manchester Selectmen's Meetings, that we were taking the burden of what Manchester had locked down. We had additional people putting additional strains on our resources, but nonetheless, we continued to accommodate. Our beaches overflowed, our parks overflowed, but we were prepared in, as far as emergency services, the stress level of COVID, I personally was impacted by it. I saw that our professional policeman fire department in action. They were prepared to answer the call. How everyone was impacted varied from family to family. Our schools had to react to it on a regular basis, a daily basis, weekly basis. I think that, considering that none of us knew what was coming, I think our city has done a fine job. The game certainly isn't over. We're coming into winter, which, who knows what with the variant that's moving and the vaccines with boosters, but I think our city has done a wonderful job, and we will continue to strive to accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give the city a B+, because nobody was perfect during this pandemic. Has been spoken about the beaches. Once the issue arose, we found a solution to deal with it. Once we realized that the boat ramps were being taken over by odditanders, the mayor did her best to alleviate that. The only thing I suggest that we do is we learn from the mistakes and maybe better educate everybody on a daily basis. My biggest heartache was my elders. They sat at home, they were scared, they were lonely. They don't go on the internet like the younger generation does. They were, just felt like they had no idea what was happening. We need, we need, God forbid something like this ever happens again, is to look after them immediately and foremost. The rest of us have the technology to find the information we need. It was them who I worked with so tirelessly to help them understand what was happening, and unfortunately, I did lose one of them, and God bless them. And I'd also like to thank all the charities that stepped up, like Jason's wife, Sarah, the Food Pantry with Julie, and working with the greatest group of people I have ever met in my lifetime with We Are All in This Together Gloucester. They stepped up behind the scenes, delivering meals to the elderly, taking care of everybody's personal needs, personal hygiene needs. When somebody couldn't find something, one of us did. One of us in that group found something to help for everybody, and that is what I love about this city, is its sense of community. And I believe we did the best job possible under our mayor's role to help make. Not everybody's going to agree on vaccinations and masks and mandates and, you know, which way to do that. I just think going forward, if this happens again, we just need better education and word out on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the city performed exemplary. The official bodies, everyone pulled through, they pulled their weight, they pulled the weight of others when necessary. My sister was working at the Open Door. Her life changed overnight. Our father was dying. My daughters were in the ER. I had somebody in my home. I still have her in my home. She's a federal employee, and she's still working from my home. We took care of our elderly, our schoolchildren, our mothers and fathers. People were forced to work from home. We helped keep the local businesses alive. I actually think this city performed exemplary. I think Safatia did a great job in her leadership role, and I think the border health was there for us, the police, the Grace Center, the Open Door. And I too was taken, in my own personal life, my father was dying then, and it was perplexing to him. He couldn't go out. He couldn't go to the grocery store. He couldn't go to the track or whatever he liked to do, and it was sad, but we all got through it, and this city is something else in a pinch.
Great. Do we have time for quick closing statements, or? I think, let's see, it's just after eight-thirty. If, no, I don't, I think we're, I'm getting some, I think we're done, folks. So, thank you all for joining. Thank you all for speaking so eloquently and sharing your time and thoughts and...
I think that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.